Calling to order, the open session meeting of the Air Planning Board for April 25th, 2023. As a first item of business, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? The only thing I would add is that we do have a meeting minutes, meeting minutes available for review and approval for March 28th.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. I don't believe we have any covenants or bond releases this evening.
Not this evening, no.
May I have a motion to open the continued public hearing for 14 Washington Street, please?
I'd like to move to open the site plan public hearing for Seal Harbor Company's Central Fire Station, 14 Washington Street, for conversion of the interior space into four, four residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space, and a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, it is open. If you welcome yourself to the table, identify yourself, sir.
Yes, my name's Cal Goldsmith, I'm with GPR Engineering from Air Mass.
Before you start, I just wanted to tell a planner, Mark, any obstacle to us to getting to, toward a vote?
I, I do not believe so. As you recall, the planning board voted on the special permit aspect of the application at the last meeting, and tonight, the site plan remains. I did share the latest version of the, of the site plan, which is right here, if anybody wants to see a paper copy.
Which is what we had at the last meeting, right?
Right, I believe so.
Has that changed?
The only comment from DPW, and I'll read this into the record, it's from Matt Hernan, town engineer, general comments, this is his comment, and we can discuss this with Cal later, from the, this should be in the packet, "From the DPW's perspective, it is not ideal for onsite parking spaces to directly abut the back of the public sidewalk on Washington Street. Given the site's constraints, it is understood that no other options for onsite parking layout are feasible if the existing building is to remain. Trucks parked onsite may encroach within the right-of-way, which would obstruct pedestrian access as well as obstruct DPW's ability to plow the sidewalk. Thus, to approve the proposed onsite parking, DPW requests onsite signage prohibiting trucks from parking in these spaces."
Does the board want to respond before I ask Cal to, to offer his response? Cal?
So my, my thought is, that's not an unreasonable request. I'd like to be a little more specific than just say trucks, because pickup trucks can park in the same parking space as a car. I would suggest commercial trucks greater than 20 feet in length, because you can have a couple of feet overhang in the front and fit within the 18-foot space that we've got. If we designated a, a commercial truck greater than 20 feet in length, that would keep it within the parking space, which is what the DPW is trying to accomplish, I think.
Question, Cal, how would you, it's one thing to, to put up a little sign that says, you know, "No truck parking," very simple. How would you make a sign to address this? Because DPW is looking for some sort of sign.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could see you saying, "No truck parking." I don't think you're going to get into a whole big, long discussion of it, but, under with the, I think if the decision was specified that nothing greater than 20 feet in length, we would all then understand what it was talking about, and I think just by saying, "No truck parking," you know, I'm hesitant to say, "No commercial truck parking," because Mark Gallagher has commercial pickup trucks, you know, with names on the site, as do we. They're going to want to park there, but I think, you know, and if you get into more specifics, like box trucks, or obviously, you're not going to put a trailer truck there, but, you know, those kind of things gets too complicated. So I, I think the sign would just say, "No truck parking," and I think we would then, if we put it into the decision that it's understood to be, "Commercial vehicles greater than 20 feet in length," then we can.
Okay. So that, so it's exactly 20 feet or very close?
It's 18 feet. Each face is 18 feet, but you've got the sidewalk in front of it that's, that if we had a, a 20-foot vehicle, they could overhang a, a bumper over the part of the sidewalk in front, and still fit within the 18-foot space.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Will there be bump stops?
At this point, we're not showing that.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be a, an impediment. I mean, the sidewalks for use of the, of the building itself.
The parking space is going to go right into the sidewalk at grade.
Right.
Yeah, so, if I may, I think it's a difficult item, because, I will tell you right now, a standard American pickup truck is almost, in Massachusetts, is almost always registered as a P A, and which is a passenger vehicle. If it has signage on it and has a commercial plate, it is still the same truck, it's just has a different designation because of use. So, some, one way or the other, I think honestly, commercial would be, that would be the designate, the designate. Because a pickup truck is considered by, how old is Massachusetts, it's a passenger vehicle?
Right.
So if we say truck, are we talking about pickup trucks? Are we talking about a single axle, 25,000-pound truck? What are we talking about?
Right.
And, and my experience in managing condominiums, this just gets huge, real fast.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So, you know, I, I do appreciate that signs could be put there, and I think working out the language would probably be the answer, but it's very, I mean, somebody moves in with a pickup truck, you say, "You can't have a truck here." Well, they pull up the registration, and it's, it's not a truck.
Right.
Because it's designated as a non-truck vehicle.
So would the condition reading, "No commercial trucks greater than 20 feet in length," be sufficient, in your opinion, or?
It's just commercial vehicles.
For, for the actual decision? Or no, okay.
But the prob, didn't, I think Cal just raised the issue of the difficulty of saying, "No commercial vehicles," when the applicant himself is going to have an office with commercial vehicles.
Right. And he's got to be able to park there during the day when the tenants.
And then I'm going to ask another question, who's going to enforce it?
I have, what?
How do we, how is this enforced?
It's enforced by the, by the people that.
Right.
As long as we're clear about that.
I'm sorry, Julie has a point, I would acknowledge her.
So, I'm conflicted with my question, so I'm just going to ask it, but, because, I'm trying to think of how I want to word it. So essentially, those signs sound ugly. And as a planning group, we have purposely said even parking is ugly in front of a building, and we understand why it's there, I'm not trying to, I think you can understand, that's not what I'm trying to say. But while this intent is good, and while I trust that the applicant would find a way to tactfully do it, because it behooves him for their business and whatnot, I guess I just want to be careful that maybe, while it's what we expect, and maybe is something we're writing into the expectation of how the spaces operate, I personally don't want to see parking signs in front of each spot, in front of this beautiful building, that we're trying to preserve for historic reasons, that, there we go.
Right, I don't think we were talking a sign for each parking spot, though, were we?
No, no.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. So are we just saying that maybe in, when you lease or rent, when you're in one of these homes, you know that your parking is not for commercial vehicles? Or what are we saying, I guess?
Well, that's a concern to be written into the lease. I mean, obviously, we'd prefer not to have a sign there, just for the same reasons you're saying.
I was actually thinking of a small placard on the building, would be.
Yeah, you could do something like that.
A placard on, you know.
Excuse me, Jeff, yeah. Nathan?
I would, I don't want to prescribe a solution.
Yeah.
I agree with, with Julie, I, I would prefer not to be a sign, but I think if we just have a finding that says, "Vehicles should not overhang the public sidewalk."
That's the issue. That's the issue.
That's the crux of it.
To the applicant, to meet.
That is the crux, that is the crux of it.
That's what I would offer.
Okay, "Vehicles should not overhang the public sidewalk."
It doesn't address enforcement, is that open?
Thank you.
I don't.
So we're going to drop, "A sign shall be installed," and just say, "Prior to issuing certificate," that, in fact, not even use that language, just saying, is our, understand, no, that in the parking, no vehicle overhang over the publicly accessible sidewalks.
Right, so the special condition would be, "No vehicle shall overhang the public sidewalk."
Which I believe is something we have anyway, in the town, in the towns. I couldn't find it right now, but we've had a vehicle on Central Ave that's been overhanging sidewalks. It's gone today, finally. It's been there for months. Nathan, thank you.
Yeah, good, good solution.
Greater, greater minds.
Yes, yes.
At work.
So let's, is there anything else to discuss regarding the application?
Yeah, just for your, just for the, the record, they did drop off a, a new elevation, that you see there. Do you have any questions about how that looks?
Okay.
Yep.
I do, so this structure here?
Mm-hmm.
Is this beyond where you recently tore down the walls on that side, or is, or is this within that?
It's within that footprint.
Okay, that's my only question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have much room to spare.
The door, maybe you can point, or Mark can point. The door is that concrete patio right on the south.
What, oh, down here?
No, yeah, further to the left.
So there's two doors, there's one door.
Oh, like, up a huge direction. Oh, I see.
I think this is what.
There's one door into an entrance this way.
On that way.
And then there's one into a hallway here with the laundry and whatnot here, and this goes into the other unit upstairs.
Which we don't see in this elevation.
Right, yeah.
It's really good in the building.
And then on this side, this is a concrete patio that would then access the door, the overhead door here, that's meant to look similar to the doors in front, which are fixed and not operable, but this one would be operable.
Does, are the board members have any other further questions? Do we feel ready to, to go to findings and motions? Motions, I'm sorry, motion for findings, motions for approval, pardon me, I'm, one of those days.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to?
So, yeah, if you feel ready to make a motion, first, we need a, a motion, I believe we need a motion with the findings, right?
Right, the findings, yep.
So, I move that the Air Planning Board finds that the site plan application for the historic Central Fire Station in 14 Washington Street meets the criteria for granting of a site plan found on, found in Section 3.5.4 of the Air's zoning bylaw, including, one, given location type and extent of land use proposed by the applicant, design of the building form, building location, egress points, grading, and other elements of the site plan could not reasonably be altered. Two, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to repeat one, should, so it's 1 dash 1 dot 1, 1 dot 2, okay. One, reduce clearing and grading on the site, or reduce the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, the length of removed or altered stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, the extent of stormwater flow increased from the site, soil erosion, or threat of air or water pollution. Two, reduce the risk of groundwater contamination from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations on the premises involving the use, storage, handling, or containment of hazardous substances. Three, improve pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicular safety, both on the site and egressing from it. Four, improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment. Five, reduce visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. Six, improve building design or scale or site design to strengthen compatibility with surrounding properties. Seven, reduce glare from headlights, reduce light trespass from lumineers, luminaires onto adjacent lots or the street, or light overspill into the night sky. Eight, avoid the removal or disruption of historic, traditional, or significant structures or architectural elements. Nine, reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. And, so that is the finding, would you like me to continue?
I think we'll be going to separate motions for the finding and approval.
Correct, yeah, yep.
So I need a second on the finding?
Oh, seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Chair votes aye, it is unanimously, the finding is unanimously approved. For the motion for the approval, I don't believe it's necessary to read all the general conditions, but I do believe it is necessary to say, "General conditions as found in."
Yeah, and I, I thought I made a copy for Cal, but the general conditions that we're talking about are the ones that go for most site plans, and some of these may not be applicable for this sort of thing, but you can look those over, and if anything jumps out, I'll let us know, and we can amend them.
And if I may.
And then we have the one special condition at the end.
Mr. Chair, well, Mr. Goldsmith's going over that, if I go to page three at the bottom, it's the special conditions in yellow, what language did we choose instead of "No truck parking is allowed"?
I believe, "Parked vehicles shall not overhang the public sidewalk."
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, too, when we cover these conditions, the south side landscaping that we've discussed, the board is making that as a recommendation, as a request, but there's no finding or, or condition on, on this, that south side landscaping, this is going to be the, the good nature of the landowners.
Right.
I don't know if we can impose a condition on, yeah, on the different property owner.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, one thing to note is, you know, the site plan, the approved site plan itself is part of the conditions, so.
Right, exactly.
So any, any deviation from the way this would be constructed, would we require an amendment, unless it's deemed to be extremely minor by the planning board.
Good. I would just ask, Jeff, that when you get to reading the, the motion for approval, at the conclusion, say, "And one unit of commercial office space, comma, with the conditions found in Section 3.5.4 in the Air General Bylaws, and the special condition is follows what you just wrote down." Is that, is that fair?
So replacing the words with the following general and special conditions?
Yep.
With the, say it again, please?
The general conditions?
Yep.
As found in, and is this correct, Section 354?
No, that was for the findings.
No, it's for the findings.
354 is the site plan criteria.
And what's the general, where, where should we put the general conditions?
They don't really have a reference, they're, they've been developed over years of.
You know, it's going to take me a few minutes, but we got to read it.
Should we just read it?
It's one, one of those things, it's a verbal record.
All right.
I want to read it real fast and give Ms. Hampson a hard time.
But this is, you've, you've done site plan approvals.
Yeah, we've done this before.
For the past four years.
Exactly.
Yeah, if, if the applicant is okay with not reading.
I'm fine with that.
I only.
And I don't have any issue with any of those.
I don't know how age as the warrant was last night, but I read that last night.
So just something, say, with the applicable, what do we say, applicable general condition?
The applicable general conditions, and one special condition.
And one special, applicable general conditions and one special condition.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
These, these general conditions, as I understand, get recorded with the deed.
Oh, yeah, 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 it goes into the notice of, they, they'll all be in the notice of decision, which gets signed.
It's going to be in a record somewhere.
Yes. Yes, yes.
I think I got a, I think I have a chance.
Sure you won't feel better if he just sits there and reads it, do you?
Oh, no, I feel just fine if you don't read it. I've read through them, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, I apologize.
So I got to do the warrant last night? I think it was the fifth or sixth time I've read that document all the way through.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the site plan application of Seal Harbor Companies LLC for property located in 14 Washington Street to convert the former Air Central Fire Station into four, number four, multifamily, two-bedroom apartments, and one unit of commercial office space, with the applicable general conditions and the special condition that prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy, a sign shall be installed by the owner stating, stating that parked vehicles shall not overhang the public sidewalk, or wording to similar effect, acceptable to the Air Planning Board for the onsite parking spaces in front of the building.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I thought we were not doing the sign, we're just putting the condition in.
Oh, yeah, there's no sign.
No sign.
I can make that, I can make that change, I accept, so I accept the removal of the word "a sign being."
I'm sorry, I, thank you.
That's okay. I'll rephrase that, "Prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy."
I don't think it's even.
I don't think prior.
It's just, it's.
Yeah, we're dropping that.
Special condition that, no vehicle be permitted.
Right, we're dropping the C O thing.
Special condition.
Good. Nice and simple.
"The parked vehicle shall not overhang the public sidewalk." The special condition reads that parked vehicles are not overhanging, okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimously approved, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing a beautiful.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it, too.
Any comment about, we're hoping about, will you be able to work on this this summer?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm quite sure he intends to do it this summer, yeah. And I'm hoping he does, because I look at it every day.
Yes.
So I just assume, see it done, and.
Well, we're looking forward to seeing it done, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night. Give my best, again, when you talk to them, please.
Yes, I will. Do you have to do something, it doesn't shut down?
Yeah, he can, well, at least I close, I close all the.
I think we need a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Some of.
No.
We rejected this.
Let me find my agenda.
All right, you're safe.
Move to close the site plan hearing for Seal Harbor Company Central Fire Station, 14 Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into four, four residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space, and a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Second.
All, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimously decided it's closed.
I'm so glad we didn't close a different public hearing.
I need, now I need a motion to open the continued public hearing for the site plan special permit and stormwater permit for Nissoya Foods, One New England Way.
Move to continue the site plan special permit, October Overley District, and stormwater permit hearings for Nissoya Foods USA, One New England Way, for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with the related site improvements.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimously open. We have a letter, shall I read this into the record?
Sure, if you'd like.
If you don't mind.
Oh, please do.
So we have a letter dated April 24th, 2023, from Attorney Thomas Gibbons, representing Nissoya Foods. This is, "Dear Honorable Members of the Town of Air Planning Board, please let this letter serve as a request to continue the public hearing regarding Nissoya Foods USA LLC from April 25th, 2023 to May 23rd, 2023. In addition, this letter will serve as confirmation of the applicant's agreement that the time for the planning board to complete the review process is extended from April 25th, 2023 to June 13th, 2023. Please notify my offices to the time in the May 23rd, 2023 Town of Air Planning Board, Town of Air Planning Board meeting. In the meantime, any questions concerning the matters, please do not hesitate to contact me. Yours very truly, Thomas A. Gibbons, Esquire."
Move to continue.
We got a move to continue, do we need any further language in that, is that good enough?
No, no, that, that covers us for the.
To May 23rd?
Move to continue.
It actually, yeah, it covers us to June 13th, but the, the meeting should be, I mean, the hearing should be continued to May 23rd.
Yes, move to continue the site plan special permit and stormwater permit hearings for Nissoya Foods, One New England Way, for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements, to the planning board meeting scheduled for May 23rd, 2023, assumed to be at 6:15 PM.
Seconded.
Any discussion, Nathan, it sounded like you had something to say, please.
Can we skip a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, as, as long as it was their understanding and agreement to do so, and it's reflected in the record.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thought that got us out of more meetings.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it is continued, thank you, sir. So, I think the next big item on the agenda is, is the peer review of Air Solar II B site plan.
Right, I have something to hand out here, I believe this was sent to everybody already, but I will walk through it a little bit. I was hoping to give one to Cal, but, okay, so the RFP for the Air Solar II B, you might recall that based on our, sort of somewhat painful meetings at the beginning of the year, that we collectively agreed that rather than do a piecemeal approach on, on the changes, that Air Solar II would submit a full site plan modification, and they have done so. We have the application upstairs, it's, you know, I even wrote the public hearing notice, which will be starting on May 23rd. And it was also agreed that rather than have our DPW do the, the engineering review, that it would be done by a peer review consultant. And I sent out the RFPs to five firms, Green International, which is before us, Wesson and Sampson, which was a close second, but they didn't quite complete in time, I talked to the person today, BSC Group, Graves Engineering, and VHB. So we only have one actual proposal that met the deadline, which is Green International. And I, I found it to be, you know, well-written, and, you know, acceptable to us, the bottom-line cost of their engineering review is $18,640. So.
Yeah, that's on page.
That's on page three.
Top first paragraph.
Correct.
Did the applicant have a chance to see this proposal, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
I don't think so, because we have to.
Okay.
We need somebody to review their work, otherwise their hearing won't go, go anywhere.
And also, we, the understanding is, the reason we're saying May 23rd is at a May 9th is to give, if should we agree to authorize Mark to contract with Green International for this review, we want to give them sufficient time to be able to do the reviews that we're prepared on the May 23rd meeting.
Right, as well as for Green International to, to look at the plans and to.
Exactly.
Come to that meeting, you know, with something to say, whereas if it was on May 9th, you know, it would just be kind of like, "Let's continue it again."
Right.
So that was the reason for that.
Is there, and, and in your mind, Mark, all the things for the review, when you look at the task description on pages two and three, that satisfactorily covers every aspect of the, of the, of the review process, including the stormwater, everything?
Right, yeah, yep, I, I believe so, yeah.
Questions from the board? the flood line, line, everything's kosher?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, they're not, they're not, you know, going to review the wetlands line, or, they're not going to, you know, review the construction, you know.
Okay, and, and also, attending two meetings is sufficient?
That, that can be negotiated, two meetings may be sufficient for this, since it really is really just for the, it's mainly for the stormwater management, the access, and erosion control, and, you know, all that sort of thing, you know, the solar field itself has been constructed, so.
Nathan, I'm sorry, Nathan had his handle first.
Go ahead, Nathan, please. Do we know if Matt, our P E from the town, would be able to attend, even just to observe? My intent is that we want to begin to get more accustomed to his presence and the review, and this might be, you know, the, you know, it could be outside review, and they're responsible, but it'd be, it'd be great if Matt has a time to be here. Can we request that?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Can you shoot him an email this week, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you mind, if you would?
Yeah, I can ask him to attend the May 23rd meeting.
And I think if you explain what Nathan's reasoning, I think that would be helpful, too.
Yeah, and they're, they're in full agreement with the need to do this with an outside consultant.
Okay.
And I would understand if he can't make it.
Oh, right, obviously, well, there's, you know, there's both Dan and Matt now, so.
So, I mean, I feel that the, the reputation of Green International is pretty high, and they're, they're well, probably one of the biggest firms in this, engineering firms in this, civil engineering firms, right?
And as I mentioned to you earlier, discussing this, Green International has contracted with the Town of Littleton to do most of their engineering review for large projects, so if, if they work out well for the town, that might be something to, you know, think long-term.
They actually list us as a, as a prior, peer reviewer experience, and I'm trying to think which, if I can, I can't remember.
There was something.
Yeah, Green did work for us in the past, I can't think which one it was.
Well, 40p.
Yes, that, I'm sorry, that's correct. And actually, the Air Commons is listed as a project that they did, they did previous peer review on at this point.
Okay.
And so, I'm actually, I'm 100% comfortable with this.
Okay.
I don't see that it's gonna need a lot of pre-meeting, pre-work meetings, this, this project's kind of all, all moving along, and I believe two meetings was, wasn't sufficient.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea to invite Matt Harnin to come. I think Harnin is his last name, I believe?
Yes.
The town, the, the new town engineer. That guy's climbing a hill pretty fast right now, so we may find him. Hopefully he'd be able to, to join.
Okay, great. Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the response, the R, response, the R.
The proposal submitted by.
I'm sorry, the response from Green International affiliates to the peer review services, the Air Solar IIb Solar Votek site plan dated April 21st, 2023.
And if I may add more language, and authorize our town planner to.
And, and authorize our town planner to engage in, in.
Contract?
Competing the contract with them.
Thank you.
And I actually have a question that I'm asking. We request that the town manager's office actually sign the contract.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So he'll start the process. I don't want to put Mark in a position where he's got science or something he can't actually do.
No, Robert signs.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Seconded.
Any, any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, Heather?
And I'm sorry, I'm not part of the board, but can we just ensure that on the number six, the coordination of the applicant, this will say that the conservation commission be part of the meetings?
Oh, sure. Can we, is that conservation be invited?
Oh, 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 sure, yes, yes.
Actually, I believe they mentioned it in the document. But yes, absolutely. It's actually presumed in the document that some of the work, if I may, it is assumed the wetland replication areas will be reviewed by the conservation commission, so I have a feeling they're gonna be.
Well, I mean, yeah, I just want to make sure that, because I'm reading through some of these texts, the first time I'm saying it, so I apologize, that I just want to make sure that everything that's the concern of the commissioning on the planning boards, and the persons that are on site and most, that all those are being met, and I can't do that quick enough before you make this vote, so I just want to make sure that, that we're involved in the, in the meetings with the consultant to do the peer review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noted, and I, I agree. If we can just, again, note that conservation. Good, so, I'm sorry, any further discussion?
We're gonna have to remember that.
Yes, we will. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. You are authorized to engage with Green.
Right.
Next item on our agenda, I believe, is you gave us a nice, some documents here in context for us upon your departure, but also the process description for site plan applications. Did you want to walk us through that, or just, just note that you provide this for us?
I think it's fairly self-explanatory. It's all within the site plan regs and also the planning board rules and regs. I just put it more in a narrative form, you know, based on my experience of, you know, sort of how it flows. And I also gave this to Samantha Benoit, and, as well as the, the list of contacts, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Samantha Benoit works upstairs, and she'll be helping out in the transition period. Julie was, didn't, first I think Julie's heard Sam's name.
Just the board of health.
And Sam works as the board of health, also works with building.
Yeah, no, she's also.
Sits where Heather used to sit on the third floor, and she has been engaged to help with the transfer, to the the transfer period.
And a volunteer.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
We save the farewell remarks to the end, is that okay? We do the meeting?
Oh, yeah, right, yes.
Do you have an, okay, good. Remember the discussion of the meeting minutes last meeting, there was some confusion about the drafts of the 3rd, March 28th? If you would pass those around, this is the corrected.
Do you have one?
Version, thank you. That incorporates all the various edits that were requested.
Yeah, just, just documents seem to have passed in the ethers.
Yeah, it's, there was a little bit of confusion, but this is, I believe, correct. And so what I'm looking for is, see if we can approve this tonight so that I can sign it, and this would be part of the formal record.
I move that we approve the minutes of March 28th, 2023, air planning board meeting.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, is unanimously accepted. Old business, new business?
Okay, also, in your packets, I, I believe that Jonathan and Ken came up during the weekend, so I gave them the site plan for Lex Fest, which is at Zero Scully Road. It's, it's a minor site plan, very similar to Bishop Road.
So this does go to Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the application narrative, and there's a simple site plan. What they're proposing to do is, because it's a landscape warehouse, a landscape wholesale company moving in there, the building commissioner felt there was a change of use to the degree that it should have site plan review, so. You know, that's what that's on for. So I recommend that the planning board contact the owner, or actually contact GPR for a site visit prior to the May 9th meeting in order to, you know, go down there and look at how traffic is flowing. I think the big concerns will be traffic flow, truck deliveries, outdoor storage, and parking.
So for the site visit prior to this, do we have to make a public announcement of that site visit, or?
There needs to be a, is it 24-hour notice?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, yeah.
Forty-eight hour notice?
Yep, so someone will need to just do a little public notice.
I will do that.
Make sure it gets filed with the town clerk and posted outside.
And you gave me Cal, and Cal Goldsmith is the appropriate contact.
Correct.
All right, so I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow about a site visit, and that's for, once.
That's for Zero Scully Road, the Lex Fest property.
Yes, and I was just gonna call on you, one second. I, I, so let me frame it for you. So I had a conversation earlier with Heather, and I'm gonna ask her to contribute to the discussion because regarding timing and the relationship attaining to the conservation commission. Heather, would you approach the table, please?
Sure.
Do the usual.
Yep. I don't get to sit on this side very often.
So just Heather Hampson, et cetera?
Yeah, Heather Hampson, conservation agent, it's not on here. So with this application, I have some questions and concerns on it. So when you do, do your site visit, I do request that I be involved and go out onsite.
Okay.
There.
Include, include.
Yeah.
And that means, Heather, do you anticipate any of your commissioners coming with you?
No, just me. Because there's no application before the conservation commission for this project, because it actually ends up being, I was speaking with Charlie during our land use meeting, this isn't after the fact, those businesses are technically already in there. But nobody ever came to conservation for this project. I can't find anything for the addition of the warehouse, I can't find anything for the outdoor parking, storage, any of it. I even checked the planning board files to see if there's a site plan, there was never a site plan from what I could find for this, and it was built in 1982, which is well beyond all zoning. So there's just, there's lots of questions with this application.
So.
That we will need to look through and discuss, and then all those questions will come up when we have that public hearing in, in there.
Do you have any blackout dates before contact, you can't do it between now and May 9th?
Do I have any? I don't believe so.
And the preferences for the AM, as usual?
As long as it's not, the only thing I don't have is Wednesday mornings I go out to Air Solar II. So if you want to do it nine o'clock on a Wednesday, that's fine, but eight o'clock, I'm typically out there.
Okay.
Sorry, but that's all I got.
Do we expect to see the applicant on the 23rd?
For Air Solar II?
No, for Lex Fest.
Lex Fest is, Lex Fest is scheduled for the 9th.
Okay.
They're scheduled for the 9th.
Being a simple site plan, yeah.
You know my schedule on this chair, so.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna give you any.
I already took care of the public notice and all that, so it's, it's in the paper.
But there's no special permit involved in this?
No, just a site plan.
So I think we'll, we'll be able to meet the quorum requirements, I think we'll be, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All set?
We're all set. Thank you, Heather, appreciate your, appreciate your contribution.
The other item that I put in the packet is a reduced 11 by 17 copy of the Air Solar IIb site plan modification that we were just talking about. Oh, no, that's 14 Washington, but you, right there.
Oh, right.
That's, that's the narrative in the 11 by 17 of the new Air Solar IIb project, the hearing for which will start on May 23rd.
Thank you.
Yep, so, so there, there won't be any overlap, so. You know, that gives the planning board time to get ready, it gives the, the engineer time to review everything.
Perfect, so, good. Excellent. Julie, could you give us an update on the master plan midterm review?
Yes, so it's been delivered by Town Hall, and so if you remember, we have a document from our master plan that has the implementation items and the hundred or so goals, but we divided it by department, and at this point, we've just checked in, and it looks like almost half have filled it out, so we're just gonna kind of, maybe by the end of the week, give a little nudge.
That's what we're thinking.
To finish, but I will say the people that have filled it out, it looks like they're using it fine, the grid's working, so I, I think we'll have a good assessment of where we're at with the master plan next month.
Thank you so much, Julie.
No problem.
Any further updates, like zoning review, or any other issues that we previously discussed? Okay, good. I just wanted to check in, Jeff, anything?
I have a piece of news, doesn't directly impact us, but we're kind of excited about this, so I'm gonna put it out there. The company NOAA, the nonprofit that wants to build Air Commons, executed the purchase and sale, has purchased the property.
Wow.
It is Tuesday, so the purchase took place sometime midweek last week, and they're pretty excited about that. And just so you all know, the expectation is that they'll be taken seriously by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the fall round of funding. So hopefully, the Air Commons will be moving forward.
Thank you, excellent, good. Any further new business, old business? Yes, ma'am, please, Heather, come on up.
I, I know these aren't necessarily planning board items, but I did one to make, because there's no public input on your agendas. So the, as all of you may be aware of, the Pocket Forest program that the, the town is doing, on Saturday, the 29th, at the intersection of Main Street and East Main Street, is where the Piap program's going, and we're having our planting day that day. So there's two planting times, at 10 to 12 on Saturday morning, and then again from 1 to 3. There's a sign, I believe it's a sign-up sheet through the Pocket Forest website. It's a crazy website. It's, it, there's a link to it on the conservation page on the town's website, easier to find, so you can have all the information there for our planting day for the Pocket Forest, because I wish again is Saturday at 10, and again at 1. Also, just to be aware of, anyone who watches these meetings, the conservation commission is starting a land stewardship program for the pine madow conservation area. So if anyone is interested in volunteering to be a land steward, which would include helping maintain the trails, we need to do some re-blazing of some of the trails onsite, doing any guided tours, if you have any expertise in bird watching, or fungus, or trees, to do things like that, or any other activities you think would be fun for that property, to have them get in contact with me, and we'll try to plan a meeting hopefully in May, but may end up being closer to June with the amount of applications I've recently received to have all the volunteers come in and meet with the conservation commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I do have one last remaining item before we adjourn, and that is to acknowledge that this is our town planner, Mark Archimbo's, last air planning board meeting, and that as of April 28th, he'll be departing from us and moving on to, to new things. And I just want to acknowledge and thank him for his service, I think it's been six years now, right?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, and over that time, I, I think of, I think about all the things we've done that time, we've gone through two form-based code processes, multiple revisions, some larger, some smaller, to, to regulations and bylaws, streamlining of administrative processes, four OSRDs, right? And, which is, each one of them a pretty big deal, and, and pretty much landmark in the state, too, I mean, pretty advanced stuff. And then, of course, multiple countless A&Rs and other.
Site plans.
Site plans, projects, et cetera. And, and I just, on behalf of the board, and I'll also open up the board to, to say their own words, but I just want to say thank you. Mark, thank you, and we wish you the, all the best in whatever your next endeavors be. May all your birds be identifiable. We have a little something for you, sir.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the board, and I just want to open up for comments.
May I start?
Please, Julie.
So, Mark, I, I mean, we're gonna probably be a little redundant in saying thank you, but I think being the first town planner that we've officially had, you're trailblazing, and it's not always easy to create a role from scratch. And you've done it well, I don't think I would have had any idea that it hasn't been something we've done before. As you're mentioning the OSRDs, I'm remembering that meeting where you brought the expert to us before we even created that, just to talk about what dense planning looked like in order to save all that space. And I remember, that was the first time I actually found it interesting, planning. And, and, and being at an information session like that, that really helped us change things, was pretty awesome. And personally, I, I have no background in planning, and so I've learned a lot from you just being able to come and ask questions and learn as we go. I came to you early on, that the community preservation board had asked me to do this dual role and be the representative on planning, and I remember meeting with you and Heather and saying, how do I do this? Could I learn, could I learn it knowing that this role is needed? And your door was always open, and your knowledge was always shared, so thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you, Julie.
I'll just say, Mark, it's, it's been good to have you here, you're reliable. I think your attendance score is near 100%. And what many, maybe, many people probably don't know is also that includes the site visits.
Yeah.
So appreciate your reliability. And just know, the way that you would pay attention to these things, this is where your heart is, this is where your interest is, so I'm glad that you're able to do something that appears you enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've all said everything that comes to mind. I'm gonna say it a little bit differently, hold your head high, you worked hard in this town. We are not a sleepy little burg somewhere west, northwest of Boston, and.
We're a noisy little burg.
I, I refer to, we're on the bounce. I, I know, I, I got a chance to work as chairman directly with Mark for many of the years as he was here, and I think there are times when you sit down, sit back, and Jonathan talked about it, you've done some pretty, in a planner's world, Mark, you've been at the forefront of doing some pretty incredible stuff. And it wasn't always fun to do, it wasn't always easy to do.
That's for sure.
And you should always hold your head high for what has been accomplished in this town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Now, keep doing it for somewhere else.
So just.
Don't just walk away now.
So, did you have your hand? Just FYI, I will be meeting with Robert and Carly tomorrow to talk about all the mechanics of the transition and what needs to be done in the interim for a planner, a new planner, et cetera. So I just want to let you know that, that is, that is happening. And of course, I'll keep you informed, anything I learn, you'll know. The other last thing is that I attended a webinar this afternoon regarding the open public meeting and public records law, and there were some issues that definitely concerned me. And in fact, I'm gonna obey what I learned today and say, we, I really, since it's not on the agenda, I'm not gonna discuss all the things here, but we will be placing it on an agenda very soon, because there are some important things that we have to make adjustments that may require also getting some input from Town Hall as well on, on certain procedures, and to ensure full compliance. That said, that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do I have to make a formal motion, or can I just so moved?
Yes, we do.
So moved to adjourn this meeting.
Seconded.
Good night, everyone, thank you, and Mark, good luck, man.
Thanks, Mark.